Evening.
Hi, welcome. Uh, welcome to the February thirteenth commission meeting and I'm really happy to see everybody here to, to sort of welcome our new firefighters on this journey into their service for Ventnor. It's uh, it's really an exciting time for them and I'm so glad that you're all here to support them. We'll uh, we'll start the meeting off with a call to order and a flag salute and then we'll uh, we have a few resolutions. And then we'll get right into the swearing in ceremony and I just want to personally thank them all. Thank the chief and the entire staff for um, for this honor to swear them in and um, and wish them all the best in the world. And a great department. Um, it's a, it's really a uh, one that gets all the accolades it deserves. So um, if you could all stand for the flag salute. Ledge Legion?
The United States. Into the Republic for which it is. One nation under God, indivisible, with every being.
Thank you. Roll call.
Commissioner Landgraf absent. Commissioner Mento?
Here.
Mayor Kreebel?
Here.
Pursuant to the Open Public Meeting Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. The agenda for this meeting is posted in City Hall and on the city's website, www.ventercity.org. Uh, the City of Venter offers live streaming and the option of the public uh, to comment via remote access as a convenience to the public. In the event remote access is unavailable for any reason beyond the city's control, the city will not pause or stop the live meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue remote access in the, at the discretion of the city for any future meetings. Uh, so uh, we will um, now, we want to need to vote on the resolutions first before we swear in? Yes. So uh, resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero seven three is resolution. Uh, and then we'll go through resolutions and we'll call you up one at a time. Uh, dash zero seven three is a resolution, City of Venter, County of Atlantic, authorizing the hiring of Nicholas Lacavera. May I have, yeah, may I have a, may I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Cindy, roll, roll call please.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kreebel?
Yes. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero seven four, resolution City of Venter, County of Atlantic, the hiring of Ryan Devini.
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kreebel?
Yes. Resolution zero seven five, resolution is Venter City, County of Atlantic, for the hiring of William Tillis, firefighter. May I have a motion please?
And I know this young man and I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Second.
I seconded. Cindy, can I have a roll call please?
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kreebel?
Yes. Alright, congratulations. If we could have uh, Nicholas Lacavera please first.
Stand up and take pictures.
Hi Nicholas Lacavera, I'm Nicholas Lacavera, I'm a fireman, I swear. Well, I support the Constitution, I will support the Constitution of the United States, the states' Constitution, uh, Constitution of the state we govern, the state we. Uh, where I will bear true faith, true faith with those who dispute the Constitution. And for the government, and for the government, established in the United States, established in the United States, and in this, and in this state. With the authority of the people, the authority of the people, faithfully, faithfully, partially, partially, justly perform, justly perform, all the duties, all the duties of the office of, of the office of. Firefighter, firefighter, effective February sixteen, twenty twenty-five, effective February sixteen. For the best of my skill to do, according to the best of my skill and ability.
Good lady.
And. You have the firing. That I will faithfully, faithfully and partially, partially and justly perform, justly perform, all the duties, all the duties of the office of, of the office of. Firefighter, firefighter, effective February sixteen, twenty twenty-five, effective February sixteen, twenty twenty-five. According to the best of my skill and ability. I will support the top. The United States. State of the country. The United States. The United States. Same. The United States. The United States. And in this. With the authority of the people. Uh, faithfully, faithfully, partially, partially, justly perform, justly perform, all the duties of the office of, of the office of. Firefighter, firefighter, effective February sixteen, twenty twenty-five, effective. According to the best of my skill and ability.
Yes, sir.
All tired firefighters, want to come up front, we're going to take some pictures. Whoever wants to take, take.
Andrew, Andrew, you should be by Nicholas. Andrew, get by Nicholas, get by Nicholas, Andrew, get by Nicholas, Andrew, get by Nicholas.
What a time to be gone.
Andrew, come on, Andrew, come on. Stop.
So.
Side, come on.
Andrew is on your other side.
Hey, pussy.
He knows. Five, two, three.
Alright. You guys, everybody.
One minute.
Yes, let's go. Alright, wait a minute? Yeah.
You're all welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but we'll pause for a little bit before we get started.
Good.
What's up, boys? How you feeling? You weren't feeling so hot last night? Yeah.
I'm putting up any words when I can say.
Right.
Yes.
You know, there's not, there's no. It's all him down there. Yeah. And Andrew, of course, you know, always got to steal the thunder away from. I mean, I kind of. Alright.
Everything's good.
What's he doing?
Everything's good.
Come on, Andrew, let's go. Like their little walk around. When we just walk around. Going to make it a, you know, see if we can even up there.
Very little.
And when they do, it's, it's. It's like uh, very small.
There, are there people on the, on our? Jim, could you put up the PowerPoint?
Yeah, I'm getting right up.
Okay. Thank you. We're gonna. We're gonna continue with the agenda now. Um, next on the agenda is uh, a collaboration that the City of Venter did with ACIT. Um, if I could just briefly run through a couple of quick slides. I want to thank Drew Holmes and his entire staff for taking on this project. You can see they're, they're here. I'll just give you a b- brief run around if you could just click through the next slide. And the next. Um, this is a, this is a uh, a collaboration between the City of Venter and ACIT and uh, Drew Holmes, next slide. Um, the staff, uh, this is a little bit of data about the City of Venter, how we're, how densely populated we are and how valuable a new open green space would be to the people, the City of Venter who, uh, given we have a, a beach, but this is a, this is a different aspect of uh, of the City of Venter. And we challenged uh, Drew Holmes and his class to come up with conceptual designs. So the next slide. This is a large tract to land off to the left of that image in the green. Next slide. Next slide. Uh, it was originally developed, it was originally contemplated to be uh, homes and streets. Those paper streets are still on there, but over the years, it was not developed. Uh, you can see that uh, that's the same image there on the left-hand side. Um, next slide. Um, this is the current tax map and roughly the current uh, uh, state of it. It's a, it's a combination of, of some paths and some uh, some roads that uh, that are still um, prevalent through there, but it's mostly untouched wetlands and some highlands. Next slide. This was a, an image of a um, of a, a part, of a conceptual plan that the city did in our master plan. This was one of the images that we gave Drew and his class here as a jumping off point for their study. Next slide. And uh, that, you may see this here and I'll um, uh, well, this is a topographical map that the class had done. I'll pass this off to, to Drew if you don't mind, if you want to take it from here. Um, and I, and I just want to say thank you and, and to all the students that came here today and all the representatives. It was really a fascinating uh, experience for me to see the creativity and the, and the skill of this class. They, they um, I, I think the, 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 they really, they really um, expanded on the idea of what this park could potentially be in the future. I'll leave it to you.
People often.
Oh, great. Very nice.
Okay. Got the booklet, there's that.
Yeah. A lot of that.
That's a lot of that, that's all.
Right, and this is the topographical map that he made of the entire.
Event area.
Exactly. Alright, so. I got an A in my.
First off, let me wrap this whole thing by saying, I really appreciate the opportunity. It's at this project. I want to thank the mayor and the city administrator, Tom. Man, I don't know what, but I guess we met with the mayor four months ago, Mrs. Gould, myself and uh, Tom, and talked about the project. And what was cool about it is, I was looking for a project to do, but the students lined up every year ago then in front of uh, Jersey Society of Landscaping Workmen's House. And they had a design problem. And basically what that design problem is, they designed for diversity. And what they, what it does is like each student or about, I guess we had forty students divided up into uh, forty students, they divided up.
Oh, can we? Let me give you a, a mic here.
Right, if I just move this one, yeah, right over close, close by him. Can you hear me? Yeah, I can't hear you.
For the Zoom public.
Apologize for my foolish antics there. Okay, uh, so we divided up into groups where we had about four students per table and they had about eight or nine design professionals at each table. And what the students had to do, the challenge was, they had to come up with a conceptual design. Each table had to come up with a conceptual design. But the thing was, they had to take it from somebody like, I had to look at it like you're blind, or I had to look at, I see Mr. Santoro over there. Had to take it like you're in charge of the public works department and you're thinking about it. So everybody had their own little thought process. You know, you had somebody that had a wheelchair and uh, it was great because what happened is the kids kicked in and went to town. And uh, what was nice was, they sat down and the students got the opportunity to meet with different design professionals and basically give their opinions and then listen to what the design professionals had to say. And it was an awesome learning exercise. And then we started out by, we started the day out with what exactly I'm doing here. As we talked about the, what they did, they came in and did this topo map first. And the students met with the county and we met with uh, the county GIS and they gave us a topo map. And then the kids came in and cut this out on a laser cutter and made this map. And what's nice about it is you can look at this map and tell what's useful and what's not going to be. Obviously, if you see it, the, the lighter colors are showing it's underwater. So you're not going to be able to put a trail underwater. So that's just, you're, you're going to think about the high points, what's observation and what's not. You know, uh, then they kicked in and did a booklet. And if you look right here, I'm going to bring in uh, Kendrick up here and he's going to talk about what he did with the booklet. What's your name?
Name is Kendrick Tred. I'm a student at ACIT.
Can you come over here, Kendrick?
Um, so what we did here for the booklet is we, we included like a lot of the stuff we went through. So here's the content. Uh, wait, where's the QR code?
Uh, it's not working.
Not working? Alright. So. Um, here's an introduction. Uh. This is like what the benefits of the eco park could be. The land and its history.
And that's one of the things they had a look at. We met with Dr. Wagner from ACIT and he actually grew up back in the area. And what they did, the, the students had to interview Dr. Wagner and he explained, you know, what it was like in a his father actually took up maps and marked the maps up and showed the progression of how the dump went and why it's called Glass Beach. He explained all the background and the history. And then Kendrick put it into this booklet.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
Then we hit the demographics of the booklet and I don't mean to be pushing you along, but we, we got to get going quick, right? So uh.
So um.
You want to talk about that?
Uh, we have a, a bunch of aerial photos of the site from um, the nineteen thirties up until recently, really. And here we have um, ecosystem and wildlife. That picture was by me. And we have like a, a list of all the, all like the creatures that live around the area, the ecosystem. And yeah.
Perfect. Alright, let's bring in the overall, we start talking about the entrance to the site, how we designed that. Store over here.
So, my name is. So my name is uh, Octavio Martinez. Uh, I'm a senior here at ACIT. Um, so. I guess, I guess, I'm very, I guess thankful for this opportunity um, given to us. So that's what I want to say first of all. Um, but this project that we hear, um, what we hear is a um, the entrance way of the park.
The other side there, Kendrick. That's right, yeah, come, well, you're coming, that's actually coming this way.
Um, so this eco park um, has a lot of, um, I guess murals and I guess statues that represent the wildlife and um, I guess wildlife here that lives here in New Jersey, in this area. Um, so you have a, like a grab a, well, I believe.
It's uh, her seabass.
Yeah, her seabass, yes, there, um, more people will explain their murals, um. But you have the entrance, um, a bunch of murals and that's basically the entrance way for the eco park. So, yes.
Yeah, and I guess the guy that designed the entrance way couldn't be here, but what he wound up doing was we had a uh, you look at it, he came up with a conceptual uh, design. It's like glass. That's Glass Beach. And then the, with the, the graphic arts department came up with a logo for the eco park. And we'll show you that in a minute or two. But thank you guys.
Thank you.
Alright, we're going to go with uh, we'll start out with Hayden and uh, Joey. Grab your uh. Sculpture. So each, each group, we broke the class up into about a group of eight and each group had to come up with their own designs for uh, since I'm not talking into the microphone, but each group had to come up with their own conceptual design for an outdoor classroom. I guess the park itself is located right by the middle school. And so they came up with a design, an overall design where they were linking the middle school to the eco park itself to use that as a teaching tool.
That's, that's.
And I'm going to hand over to Hayden and Joey.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for being here. Yeah. So um, I'm Hayden and this is Joey and this is our outdoor classroom. So um, I'm going to let Joey talk about the uh, greenery and the design of the park.
Alright, so I made a uh, I designed like a clover shaped like type of overall design. I think it looks really nice and I added greenery around it. You can see that there's um, rocks too. And you can see there's trees surrounding it. There's like, I think moss like all over the arches and stuff. So I think it's a really nice design and Hayden's going to talk about some of the apps aspects.
So for the entrance, we have a trestle for the entrance and inside of the trestle wave glass. Now, we wanted to incorporate glass beach into our design. So what would, if this was like, if this concept was picked up for an actual design, how it would work is you take recycled glass from Glass Beach and you like melt it up and form it into the way of the arch. And you either tint it green or red. Now, right here, we have a tinted green for the entrance and over here, we have a tinted red for the exit. Now, when you walk into the outdoor classroom, you'll have benches and desks for students to sit in. You'll also have a trash and recycling bin and an AVA desk for handicapped students. Now, another aspect of this design is the whiteboard. Now, the whiteboard can pull up and rotate to accommodate for students on each side and it can also move this way for the AVA desk. That is our overall design and thank you for listening. Thank you for letting us be here and showing you our outdoor classroom.
Each student had to come up with a piece of sculpture and uh, all the sculpture relates to the ecosystem of the park. But if you look at it, the concept is overall they're going to have walking trails and then they'll have boards. It, it'll talk about the wildlife. It, it'll talk about the wildlife and talk about the sculpture. And I actually just spoke with uh, somebody from uh, Mason Grove School of Arts up at Rutgers and they'd be in on this and Stockton is definitely in on it. And I guess I left that out. Stockton came in and basically worked with the kids in the beginning, remember that Eric? Let's bring up Robert. Thank you. Sculpture first?
Yeah. Hi, I'm Robert McCready. Um, I am a sophomore at ACIT for the CAD program. And for my design, I made an outdoor classroom and a sculpture. Um, for my sculpture, um, I wanted to do like something that represented like the citizens of Vettner. I was thinking about like, what is something that they do in the summer? Like, what is their favorite thing to do? Um, so I decided to do a surfer dude because as you know, like a lot of people like to surf in the summer. Vettner is known to be a very beachy town, so I'm actually a Brigantine citizen myself and I thought like, hey, let's make like um, a sculpture of like something that'll like represent like the citizens of Vettner. So I decided to make like a surfboard um, and a palm tree. And I made it, um, as a surfboard propped up like on the palm tree. And I made a little surfer dude and him holding a surfboard. So for my outdoor classroom, I wanted to make something very simple and like have like a lot of nature. So we made some ADI desks and we wanted to make the space like wheelchair accessible. We didn't want to like make like so much going on that looking like you've been like barely even move around the place. But we have our archways, we have rocks surrounding it, trees, plants, like all that jazz. Um, so for the archway, um, we decided to add like glass on top of um, of our, our archway. And, and yeah, we just basically have like rocks and trees surrounding it. Thank you guys so, so much for allowing me present this. It is truly an honor to be here today.
Alright, do you want to go first?
Can you speak into this or the?
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Sharon Garnika Ramirez. And this is my sculpture. It's a sculpture of a sea bass, which is mainly made of recycled glass from the Glass Beach. And it's supposed to be laid out with its fins like openly, so then it could look like it's like rising. And me and my teammates, we also made a park which concludes of having a lot of greenery in there, like surrounding it and some rocks also. It also has a greenhouse where people can go like inside and study or just have like plants inside. We also have these desks and tables where the um, children can study. We also have this beautiful central plant garden and we also have tall trees foreshadowing. And yeah, thank you.
The birds flying away.
Okay. Um, uh, this is, this is my sculpture. It's um, of. My name's Sarah. Um, I'm a sophomore at ACIT. Um, this is my sculpture. It's a flicker bird. Um, which is very populated. It's uh, very prominent in like the eco park. Um, it's uh, has like uh, like the, a tree and like the branches surrounding it, like representing how when it finds home in like dead trees and it carves out a home in the trees. Yeah, and this is my uh, eco, like classroom. Um, I kept it pretty simple. Um, it's uh, the contour of a hibiscus flower with a sundial to see the time based off the shadow of the sun. Um, we kept it pretty simple. We had a trail leading up to the classroom with a couple uh, chairs and tables. Thank you.
Okay, hi, I'm Madangeli's Cruz and I'm a student at ACIT. And this is a box turtle. I did the box turtle because it's known in the forest and the woods. I wanted to really go deep into the history of the site first. And I did it more realistically of how it would look. It's, has these abstract designs. It's black and yellow and it's like an orange eye. And I was really curious in this animal and I was, had a really fun learning about this and the history about it. Oh, and it also will be made out of stone because I just thought that was just a better like beauty piece that you'll be seeing. It really catches your attention. Alright, so here is my classroom design. I have three other people who helped me on this project, but they could not show up today. So we tried to describe a abstract design. So here we have like the bleachers. And here will be a platform for the teacher or whoever is speaking to the class. We also tried to create two entrance ways with archways with vines all over them just to create a more eco-friendly this type of design. And then over here, we have um, ADA friendly tables. And we also have just more of a private section for when there's a smaller group of students, we have in our section other than like a bigger stadium. And we really wanted to create a very open, eco-friendly, nature full. And so we have these rocks over here, stones, and it's full of grass. And yeah, thank you.
So we're going to present from there and council in the city of Vettner. They, uh, the students came up with a uh, the link I was holding up. We had a, a plotter at school and they came up, the graphics class came up with a logo for the park itself. And we, we made a sign for a future room of Vettner Eco Park. Thank you.
Thank you. So uh, yeah, round of applause. These are, this is the, these are future designers here. They really took this project like um, in the spirit of the problem solving. The, the, this, this huge tract of land is a blank canvas and the, and I want to thank you all for the concepts and the effort that you put in. And, and Drew, the, the level that you brought this class up to and you challenged them to keep pushing the design. I've been in that classroom and he is a taskmaster. He's got a million things going on and pushing them into, into the model making and the graphic design. And uh, and the quality is just off the charts, really. He literally hit it out of the park.
The seniors couldn't come, they had done a bunch of different designs. It would have probably, we'd be here another half hour.
Yeah.
But just to want to thank the city of Vettner, everybody, the parents for bringing your kids tonight. Definitely, you could see what a great job these kids are doing and uh, you know.
You guys are amazing. I could never do this in high school and I still can't do it now. So you're really amazing and you're brave to come here and talk about it in front of everyone. And every time I'm exposed a little bit to ACIT, I'm just more and more impressed. What a wonderful school and um, it's, it's, it's great that you could be there.
Absolutely.
Yeah, because I, I, it's got to be an amazing experience for you from everything I see. So, and thank you for, for putting all this hard work into this. I know it had to take hours and hours and hours. So thank you for doing this to us and I hope we get to see some of this come to life.
Think I'll give you some time to pack up. I'll give you a hand. Okay, thank you. Take five minutes and let them. You're just going to take five minutes, Jim? That's okay. We're just going to take a few minutes while they, they uh, take their, their gear out and we'll get back started in a few minutes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Where's my? Gender with no.
No, but Cynthia, do you have? Yeah, she's coming.
Lost in this. Thank you. Well, those are tough acts to follow. Really, really impressed with their work. Um, yeah. So moving forward, uh, we have uh, department heads, um, no reports this afternoon. Uh, capital discussion. Um, we have no capital discussion this, this evening? Um, hi, um, you want to see them? We, we have, we have images of them all. I can send you, I can send you uh, images of them. For the public? Um, just a second. So the, so they'll probably be at eight, at um, they'll be at ACIT. And just so I can, I can, we can talk offline, but the, the um, as a conceptual project, not, you know, the, the, this was really a kickoff for the students. So for the city project, we're going to have a kickoff meeting for, for the professional design of the park as well. So I'll make sure you get invited to that. Alright, yeah. Uh, capital discussion. So no capital discussions this evening, correct?
Correct.
Um, we'll have um, minutes for December nineteenth and January ninth. Um, we have no ordinance introductions and no um, no public hearings. Uh, we do have res- uh, resolutions this evening um, by consent. Uh, the first resolution will be twenty twenty-five dash zero seven six. This is uh, authorizing um, uh, in uh, block party road closure for Vettner Avenue. Um, resolution zero seven seven will be uh, road closure for the holiday parade. So a lot of this is.
Yeah.
Same.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot here that deal with all our events. Going from seventy-six, it looks like to eighty-seven.
They jump around a little bit. There's one or two that snuck their way in.
Right.
We're dealing with other.
Authorizing of the, mostly it's no parking and um, and boat ramp. There's a, so I'll just go through them, but pretty quick. Um, so that we don't miss anything if there's, if you want to make, bring any comments to them or.
Generally, they're the same as last year.
Right.
We, we tweaked the wording a little bit to show more clearly if it's no parking or if it's road closure or part of the road closure in the title. Um, so that's the only change.
Okay, and that, so that's for uh, the seafood festival, the holiday parade, uh, the fireworks display, the color run, the, the Maria Maria pasta dinner, the Cancer Society Bike Ride, the marathon, the block party again, uh, farmer's market. Um, and again, these are all no parking or suspension of parking for these events. Um, waiving fees for city events. So the city sponsored events, we have various ones that we don't charge ourselves for. Uh, and then we have uh, zero eight nine is um, will be authorizing a tax refund. Um, zero nine zero will be um, uh, management services for the water tower repair and repaint for Remington and Vernick. Uh, not to exceed a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Um, and then we have another tax refund, zero nine one. And another tax fund, zero nine two. And then we have uh, authorization for engineering services for a brick facade at the um, at well number nine for not to exceed uh, thirty-five hundred dollars. That's for Zar Engineering. Um, we have a, another uh, public works item, uh, not for uh, I bank support for the uh, uh, lead service line replacement, phase one in Vettner Heights for Tetra Tech.
Yeah, Mary Faman, that's also, that's also the final design and specs for that project.
Okay. So I just want to thank Commissioner Langriff for being on the front end of this whole lead uh, uh, service replacement. So having this already in the pipeline to start, I think we're way, way ahead of a lot of other communities. So having this already in the pipeline to start, I think we're way, way ahead of a lot of other communities. Um, and this is for the design of that process. Then we have, um, another award for, uh, this is for, uh, host compliance for our short-term rental compliance monitoring.
Yeah, if I may, uh, host compliance is gone. The company now is Granicus LLC. They took over host compliance.
I see. Okay.
So this is renewing the contract for three years with this, uh, under the new name.
Gotcha. So same service to, um, to monitor our short-term rentals in the city. And it typically, it has been at the savings to the city, the monitoring. Resolution 096 is, uh, a change order for the bulkhead at Winchester Avenue.
Yeah, right. And these are the final change orders. That project's being closed out.
Okay. So that, that project will be closed out and it is, I guess, completed or close to it.
I believe so.
So without any other comments, Commissioner Mento, do you have any other comments on, on those workshop items?
I do not.
By, okay. So they'll be through consent. We'll have bills and payroll. And I believe we have one discussion item this evening. Correct? Which is. Yeah, that's fine. There was a, you want to brief, brief us in on that?
It's, it's very simple. It's, uh, uh, joining in with the county on, um, right, grant application for the LEAP. It's called Eagle View. What this is, it's actually for use by this county, various tax assessors gives them access to aerial photos and stuff they need to do their tax assessments. So there's no cost to us. It's just us endorsing and participating in that program.
The Hawkeye system. It's a.
It's called Eagle View.
Eagle View. Same. Okay.
Yeah, it used to be called something else.
Yeah, yeah. Great.
And we have to have those updated for what? Day-to-day use or for revaluations?
Well, eventually if you do a revalue, you certainly need to have updated tax maps, but it's a good idea to keep them updated on a regular basis. Um, so the, the assessor frequently needs access to aerial photography, uh, when he's doing his work to see the before and after of what's gone on at properties.
Yeah, that's right. It gives a, it gives you a, 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 a look back onto the property. And if you've ever been in, and, and and so the tax assessor uses it when he gets questions from the public for their properties, looking for comparables, that, that kind of thing.
Do you know this is something the county's doing in-house or whether they're contracting out?
I, I think it's a, it, the, there's a, a letter in your packet, I believe. Hopefully that you got that. And it, uh, it is a contract with a company called Eagle View, formerly known as Pictoometry. So the county enters into that contract and then offers the services to all of the municipalities through a shared service agreement. Uh, and the package includes the resolution that will be on the next meeting for your approval, assuming that you're willing to continue this process.
Tom, did we have that meeting with the county? Did that?
That's next week.
That's next week. Okay. That's it for me. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. So can I have a motion to open the workshop meeting for public portion?
I'll make the motion.
So this welcomes any, uh, any of the public to speak on any of the items that we've discussed so far in the workshop. I'll second the motion. Cindy, can I roll call?
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kreebel.
Yes. Seeing none in the chambers, is anyone in the Zoom platform have any comments for, uh, public portion on items we talked about so far?
Anybody on Zoom wish to question or comment any of the items that have been discussed or commented on so far? No.
Thank you. Um, I have a motion to close the workshop portion of the meeting and open the regular portion of the meeting.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Cindy, roll call please.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kreebel.
Yes. We have approval of minutes, December 19, 2024, regular and January 09, 2025, regular. Have a motion to approve minutes.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. I roll call Cindy.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kreebel.
Yes. We have no ordinance introductions, no ordinance public hearing and no ordinance adoption. May I have a motion to adopt resolutions 2025-076 through 2025-096 by consent?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. I have a roll call Cindy?
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kreebel.
Yes. May I have, uh, approval of bills and payroll? Amy?
Payables for this period is $781,839.44.
May I have a?
Payrolls for this period, $613,371.45.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve bills and payroll.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Cindy, roll call please.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kreebel.
Yes. Uh, we have any, uh, uh, no announcements or safety reports? Commissioner Mento, do you have any comments or reports?
Yeah, I do. Um, let me just go to my little note here. That was on this phone. Well, one of the things just, we've been, you know, updating for some new information. So we have some information on our pages, Facebook page on, uh, calendars, like some of the ones we just talked about tonight and we had resolutions on. So if you're interested in any of the, um, activities coming up this year, um, you can find the schedule on Special Events Facebook page and probably on our Facebook page also. Um, also, if you go to our, um, webpage, um, for the tax collector, you will find the Property Tax Relief app. Um, for, it's one application this year, very important for anchor, for senior freezes. And another program called, I believe, New Jersey Stay or Stay New Jersey. There's also a website you can go directly to with the state, propertytaxreliefapp新jersey.gov, propertytaxreliefapp新jersey.gov. I would encourage everyone to go to that and see if there's something you can apply for, for some tax relief. Um, if the, I'm trying to see what it's called, Stay New Jersey or New Jersey Stay. I can't remember what it is exactly. Um, that's pretty exciting if that comes to fruition and, and the state has put it out in their literature. So hopefully that will, um, happen. That'll give some, some seniors particularly in, um, people under a certain income. And it seems to be a little generous for that income level, uh, in my opinion, some relief on their taxes. So please go to that and there's an application deadline.
Great.
That's what I got.
Great. Thank you. Um, I, I have, um, uh, just briefly, um, projects are moving forward with the, um, with the new bandshell. Um, and keep in mind there are, I believe this is true, 102 days until Memorial Day. That seems quick. Right? I know. It feels like we're in the depths of the winter, but I just kind of felt like that should be noted that we have a hu, only 102 days left until Memorial Day. So, um, keep, uh, uh, that, that's time to gear up for our spring and all the special events really put the Ventnor in a, in a great light and, um, we're looking forward to that week, that nicer weather. Um, any, if, yeah, yeah.
I, I do have one more thing. I believe we're going to be introducing our budget in March at one of our March meetings. I met with Amy this morning and an auditor, our auditor and Tom, and, um, they've been working hard. All of them. And Amy promised to work some magic and I think she's going to do it. Um, at, at least to help us, you know, for part of, you know, covering some of the expenses that are increasing this year due to, um, really measures beyond our control. Um, so, uh, thank you for all your hard work and, um, I look forward to seeing the final result.
Great.
I have just a couple of comments. Uh, first, uh, like to compliment Rick and the DPW crew again for the, uh, the work they did on cleaning up this most recent snowstorm. Uh, streets were perfectly clear by the time I came to work. So I'm sure you all experienced the same thing. Those guys were out all night. They did a great job. I want to just compliment them on that. To add to future things coming up, we have been issued our permit from CAFRA for the boardwalk project. So that will be a go, I guess, uh, as soon as the summer is over. We're not going to try to start construction before that, I don't think. Uh, and the beach fill project is finished. You've probably seen the gigantic pieces of pipe being driven down Atlantic Avenue leaving town. So that project, uh, apparently went very smoothly. I did, I didn't get any complaints from anybody about it and we have a nice big wide beach in places where there wasn't one. So, um, another success story.
Yeah.
Can I ask, Rick, can you tell us? Everybody sees your guys out after it snows. Um, you know, pushing the snow off the street, but tell us what you do before it snows because I don't know if we all know what your whole team has to do before it snows.
Um, I live on Ventnor Avenue, so I can attest they were out all night.
Yeah.
This, uh, this storm was, was unique in several ways that the, uh, it's, it started snowing after our people were already working for eight hours. So for the cleanup part, our people worked 24 hours, were actually on duty around the clock. A, a couple of people had to go home for childcare and for to take care of their dogs and parents for a little bit and came right back. But the preparation is great because, um, any storm we have, we do, we have to apply and put on, uh, plows and very heavy salt spreaders and other equipment that we're going to need in the, the days that will, will come. So that, that by itself takes two or three mechanics, a heavy equipment operator and about six hours to do that. All the equipment is checked for safety and make sure it's in proper operating condition. And then, uh, we have to load and stage equipment and other places. We've expanded the manner in which we remove snow from our sidewalks and put ice melter down on the sidewalk. So we stash and put equipment out by the ball fields. We stash some equipment by the library. And then we have to, uh, begin brining the roads. We brine all the county roads from that pass through Ventnor from Atlantic City all the way to the Longport Bridge and Jerome Avenue. That's, uh, Ventnor Avenue. And then we brine, uh, some of our critical arteries. And then we, uh, really focus on, uh, Fire Station One and Two and City Hall so that the, the police, fire and EMS can deploy safely. And we have an emphasized, um, focus on City Hall to make sure our employees are safe when they're coming and going and to get their vehicles in and out. And then this storm again was unique because it was dropping an inch of snow an hour. So once, once it's plowable at about an inch and a half, we just keep plowing and plowing and plowing and moving it continually um, until we can see pavement. And, and we did, we were able to, um, have an accurate, uh, weather forecast also, which was beneficial. We, we're now, we've come through our second, um, major storm. We have no accidents. We didn't damage or hit any, uh, civilian vehicles. We didn't damage any of our equipment. And, uh, we had no injuries also, which was something. Yeah, something that we, we pride ourselves in it. And we have a better, uh, a focus on, on safety. So I'm very, very proud of the men and women that work in Public Works. And really John Connor, our street supervisor, public works supervisor orchestrates the, the equipment in the street like he's, like he's directing an orchestra. And it, it works very, very well.
So the day or night before snowfall, you're getting all the equipment prepared and, and the inventory and you're brine.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And we're also staging, uh, salt and ice melter. We have limited storage capabilities. So we have to make sure we receive our delivery and we have all of our, uh, our salt spreaders, um, loaded, uh, uh, onto the trucks and then loaded with salt. So we can, we can get out quickly.
And I saw John the first storm and he was very proud. It was, it was kind of nice to see because he's like, did you see the streets? Did you, how'd you do? You know, how do you think we did? I'm like, you guys did great.
Yeah. We also plow and take care of the parking lots at the school, regardless if they're open or closed. Their maintenance people handle the sidewalks. We bring in the heavy equipment and handle that. And, uh, we also respond with, we have certain citizens that, um, we have, uh, citizens that, uh, are on dialysis. We have citizens that are alone and by themselves that need to get out. So, so there's a, a group of people that will call Public Works. Um, in addition to making sure the street's clear, uh, sometimes we help them to make sure they can get out of their house safely or they could meet their transportation for dialysis or these other emergencies. So, uh, that, that happens a few times. They have our cell numbers and we, we ask them to call us so, so we could help them.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it was, it was very successful and, and, uh, you know, I'm very proud of them.
Yeah, great job. Do you, I'm curious. So do you have to plow where you brine or, or just make it easier?
Yeah, the, the, um, it doesn't melt the, uh, snow and ice completely. What it does, it, it, it limits the adhesion. It doesn't stick to the asphalt. And it helps us. It, it's, it comes off the road smoother and it reduces the buildup of ice. So.
It can use you in Savannah.
Yeah, yes. But, but thank you. That, that's why you, you probably noticed a while back when we were prepping our equipment. Um, even in the off season, we, we had to come, we need to plow, we need parts and certain things. So we have, you know, maintain our state of readiness. Sometimes that jinxes it. So you don't get any snow or weather, but this time, this time it backfired and we did get some, in a good way. Yeah. Thank you very much. Thank you for the compliments.
Yeah. Great. Great. Thanks, Rick. All right. Uh, that brings us to, um, public comment. Um, can I have a motion to open the meeting to public comment?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Have a roll call Cindy?
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kreebel.
Yes. So anyone in the public, uh, wishes to make a comment on anything we've talked about at any part of the meeting or any other subjects regarding the city of Ventnor? You have, uh, raise your hand on the Zoom platform. Yep. And if there's anyone in.
No.
No. Hearing, hearing none unless you have anything to say? That's right. Well, uh, motion, motion, motion to close public comment.
Motion. I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Roll, roll call it. Cindy, please.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kreebel.
Yes. So this evening we have no executive session and I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call Lisa. Cindy.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kreebel.
Yes. Sorry.